Good morning. It's 9:30, Tuesday, November 5th, Election Day. In 1845, Congress enacted the Presidential Election Act, which established Tuesday, the Tuesday after the first Monday in November, as a nationwide presidential election day. It was to avoid a month-long of presidential elections that happened in 1844. We can see how that worked out. Would that please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's start with a prayer, please. Heavenly Father, we beseech your divine guidance in this meeting. Keep us ever mindful of our obligation. Grant us, dear Lord, wisdom, tolerance, and courage that we may well serve our county and avail our trust. Amen.
Move to approve the minutes of the October 29th Commissioner Meeting and the October 29th Public Hearings.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion changes? Roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes. All right. Next open for public comment regarding any of our pending resolutions. Are you here regarding what any of our resolutions? Okay, well then we'll proceed accordingly. Okay, we've got the county engineer here today with us.
Good election morning. I have five resolutions for your consideration this morning. First being a vacation of a portion of Indy Street, New York Township. The second would be approving the final change order for 2023 Medina County Signal Update Project, which was a decrease. Approving the annual assessment on a subdivision in Motville Township known as Timber Trail Junction Subdivision Phase Two. And the fourth being the approval of the final plat for the Timber Trail Junction Subdivision Phase Two. And the fifth would be determining the equipment used by the county engineer as excess property and authorizing disposal of.
Move to approve the five resolutions.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Okay, very good.
Thank you much.
Thanks, Andy.
Jeremy Sinco, our sanitary engineer.
Morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Three resolutions for consideration today. The first is authorizing change order number two for the Geyer Road Water Storage Tank Rehabilitation Project. The second is authorizing the sanitary engineer to enter into an agreement with Davie Resource Group for construction inspection services for the East Reagan and Waymouth Road Riverbank Stabilization Project. And the third is creating a restricted sanitary sewer main on Poe Road. And that's located just west of the intersection of Cobblestone Park and Poe Road.
Move to approve the three resolutions.
Second.
Move second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes. Jeremy, we'll stick around. I just want to bring up, last night, we had our second public hearing regarding the change of our code of regulations for the sanitary engineers department, as well as changes in the water and sewer rate. Those are available on Facebook, on social media. If you want to see them, they were conducted live. People could comment, but they are recorded and you can review those. And I just want to make it clear, next week, we're going to be having a resolution regarding those changes, correct?
Correct. Yep, to codify the regulations and then to implement the new rate ranges for January 1 of 2025.
Right.
And have you thought about that one wording thing yet?
For change in use?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm going to work with our legal tomorrow. I have a meeting with them.
Good.
To basically provide a definition.
Correct.
Within the text.
Yep.
Great. That sounds reasonable.
Yep.
Very good. That way you don't have to hang around the discussion. I know you've got things you've got to do. All right.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, Jeremy. All right. Shannon Reiner, Transit Director.
Good morning. I just have one resolution for your consideration. Approval of the 2025 Transit Service Agreements with the various county agencies and organizations, just an annual increase to meet our cost increases.
Move to approve?
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes. Very good.
Thank you.
Thanks, Shannon. All right. Patty with Human Resources. Good morning.
Good morning, everyone. I have one resolution for personnel changes. We have one promotion in dog shelter, 11 increases, two in maintenance, three in sanitary, two in job and family services, one in building, one in dog shelter, one in solid waste district, one in office for older adults, two leave of absence, one in JFS, and one in sanitary or resignation in dog shelter, and one promotional removal in county home.
Move to approve?
Second.
Move in second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Thank you.
Thank you, Patty. All right. Brett Thomas, our Finance Director.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I have five resolutions for you today. Our first is approving the amended bylaws of the Medina County Family First Council. Our second resolution is a transfer of inventory between offices from the juvenile court to JDC. They're moving a TV. Our third resolution is declaring excess property. We have 19 items that are up for disposal and an additional 14 that are going to go up for auction. Our fourth resolution is our travel expenses for county officials. We have one on there for sanitary and one on for OOA. I do want to bring to your attention that there is a change in how these will be presented going forward. The courts have issued a new travel policy that is effective immediately as of October 30th, that they are now going to be approving their own expenses and will not be providing those for your approval or for public disclosure. Our fifth resolution is our weekly bills in the amount of $1,928,401.34.
Move to approve the five resolutions?
Second.
Move in second. Any discussion?
So we aren't...
Go ahead.
We don't... The policy is, we're not going to be reviewing those. They won't be subject to our approval. And we don't take any action. It's nothing in our policy that changed.
Correct. The courts have... Our policy stands by Ohio Revised Code 325.20, which is all elected officials, their deputies, and employees must provide advance notice of travel for the approval by the county commissioners. The courts have decided to enact a separate policy that they are supporting with an Attorney General's opinion from 1997 that a juvenile court judge did not need to have certain travel, individual travel expenses approved after his budget had been approved.
And is this just for judges or for all personnel?
This would count for all personnel that are underneath the courts. They will have a few substantial changes to that, including the idea that they will no longer be providing receipts for per diem expenses of meals or any receipts for expenses below $25 for traveling.
It'll still be... There's still... As far as transparency goes, public records requests for that information will still be available.
Okay.
Yeah, they'll just skip the disclosure step of this portion.
Yeah, and I think... And it's still subject to budgeting.
Yeah, absolutely.
Correct. Yeah. And I think too, as we looked at it and I think shared with you some of the documentation, the ORC is explicit about the Commissioners having authority over the other elected officials on a couple of those approvals.
The...
It's just the judges are, if you will, other than that OAG.
Almost 30-year law of the OAG. And it was specific to juveniles, so...
Right.
So I just wanted to let you guys know that because as we routinely provide that for public comment here, those expenses will no longer be visible through that. They'll only be through the budgetary process.
So I did have a question. I did just... I was remiss in reviewing this beforehand. The items, normally I just scan it. Adult probation is under this resolution. Going to be disposing of officer-proof vests. Are those bulletproof vests or bullet-resistant vests?
I wasn't sure what that was either.
Yeah, officer-proof vest. Do we know what that is?
To be honest, when I read that, I was kind of curious as well. And we do have documentation on it in my office, so I'll be able to get back to you with specifically what that is.
Is that normally how law enforcement disposes of? When you do have those kind of protection vests? Is that normally how they're disposed of?
If you're meaning in general, the items like bulletproof vests, et cetera, items that have a useful life to them, that then exceed that useful life and so therefore they can't really be repurposed in any fashion. Yes, those do go through disposal.
Okay. With disposal meaning auction, correct?
No, not for that because of the idea that if it has a useful life that it has now exceeded, we certainly wouldn't want to be providing to anybody else.
Hence my question, are those that... And basically, these are disposal. It's not going to be put out on a public auction.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to get that clear. Okay.
Yep.
Thank you. All right. With that, roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes. All right. Very good. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioners.
All right. Matt Springer, County Administrator.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We have four resolutions to consider. The first one is to advertise for an RFP. This is associated with our county home and our food services agreement. The current agreement expires at the end of the year, so we'd be looking to advertise for a new two-year agreement. The second resolution is also for an RFP. This is for the leasing of farmland. It's about 28 acres directly behind the county home. Again, we have an existing lease in place that expires at the end of the year. And so this would be for a new two-year term. The third is approving an agreement with Regency Construction Services. This is for the design-build project associated with the Sheriff's Office at a cost of $19,957. And then fourth is the approval of an agreement with the City of Wadsworth. This is to absorb their building department operations. And this is something we've been working on for the last several months.
Move to approve the four resolutions?
Second.
Move in second. Any discussion?
I really think the consolidation with Wadsworth is a really efficient change that we're making. So I'm looking forward to Richard helping with that operation.
Yeah, actually, I talked to Tom Morrison. They're just... I was going to say, they're very tickled about doing this. It makes all the economic sense. It says it was literally for him, from their perspective. It made so much... It was literally a no-brainer. And thank you very much for working on this, Commissioners, wedding.
And Matt took it home, so thank you.
Yes, that's great. I also, just a quick question on... I agree, by the way, with that. But on the RFP for the county home farmland, does that typically indicate what the... Do you know what is current? I know, I don't know off the top of my head what's currently being paid for that.
I believe it's $2,100 a year in the existing.
So it's less than $100 bucks an acre? It's probably in the $70 range or something like that?
Roughly. And I believe that the accurate acreage is 28.8 acres.
So at 30 acres, $70 an acre would be $2,100. That sounds right. Does that get indicated in the RFP anywhere? What the current?
As far as the use?
No, the current amount.
No, we do not disclose that.
Because I mean, it's public information.
It is, but I don't... They never disclose.
Yeah. And the only reason I ask that is because I know the last time we did this, we only... There was just the one bid, which is fine. I think the farmers who are doing it are doing a great job. And I also know there's some reservations about having other people put in a bid for that. I also frequently wonder if people knew what was being paid for it, if they'd be more inclined to bid on it. So in any event, I think they're doing a fine job. And if we only get one bid, they'll continue to do a fine job with it. But I was just curious if that gets indicated in the RFP or not. Thank you.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes. All right. All right, Department Update. Laura Toth.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I want to give a little update on our seniors farmer's market nutrition program as it's coming to a close. The voucher cards and the voucher codes are good through November 30th. We had 366 individuals in Medina County that signed up for the program. Not all of them received the vouchers, but they signed up and went through the process and were approved. So there was some discrepancy between people who were approved and the state getting that money out to them through this third-party Homegrown app. So a few bumps in the road. But funds issued for the program were $18,850. But redemption as of October 30th was $9,245, or about 45%. So I'm not sure how. I hope to make it at least over that 50% by November 30th. But hopefully, next year utilization will improve once we have a year under our belt, both the consumers and Office for Older Adults and the farmers.
That's not just our issue. That's statewide. They were having that issue because of the vendor.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely.
And to make it clear, it really is a snafu at the state level with that vendor.
Correct. It's not a...
Yeah.
Thank goodness, maybe it's not Medina County issue, but it's still, you know, we want to get food into the hands of people. And to that end, our foundation's working on getting food cards to people for the holidays, so I'll update you on that next month. I wanted to pass out some third-quarter data. Each of you can take a packet. So I can... You can marvel at numbers. The first page is our overall service breakdown by city, village, and township. And thus far this year, we've provided funds for 11,970 transportation trips. And a trip is one way. So if somebody goes to an appointment and comes back, that's two trips. We have served thus far 35,361 home-delivered meals in the county and 6,085 congregate meals. That's at Medina and Brunswick. And that also includes the voucher program at Wadsworth. The next two pages are the same data. It's just broken down by month. So there's the same total. So the third page is a chart of our meal delivery. I really think this is important because this year, we're currently in is the maroon line. And you can see pretty consistently over the last three months that we are above 22 and 23, and even 21. At the beginning of 21, we were still coming down from our COVID numbers. But then we got back into kind of the normalcy. But that normal is going up. And I would like to draw your attention to that as we talk about in the budget hearing next month, increasing a driver route to be able to cover the increase in meals, which is averaging just around 200 meals per day that were out there in the community. So we don't like drivers to have more than about that 25 number. Several of them do, just to get within that lunch period, that 10:30 to 2:00 delivery period. And so the meals can be hot and delivered at an appropriate time. So we are looking at that one personnel increase of a part-time driver. And again, I can go into that in more detail in the budget hearing, but I just wanted to give you a little preview. The last page in that data packet is our transit costs. As Shannon just came up here and presented, there will be an increase in that as mileage... We pay per mileage. If you sign a contract for transit, you pay per mileage. We were paying $325 and are paying $325 in 2024. And that rate is going up to $350. Thus far for the year, Office for Older Adults has paid $145,671 for transportation. There is a cost transit also pays. So their adjusted costs with our funds are $106,270. $106,270. So, you know, transit, it's not a cheap venture. It's very important. We will do it. We'll continue to do it. We're talking about how we can do that most efficiently for our senior clientele. We hold the largest contract. We provide the most rides to people in Medina County. So Shannon's very open to conversations. And I've talked with Administrator Springer about it. So we continue to talk about these transit costs and what we can do to try and keep them down and make sure people are going when they have transit arranged and get the best services, get the best bang for our bucks here, our levy dollars. So that's all the stuff we're working on kind of right now. Any questions on those numbers? Okay. We have worked with the finance department to utilize or to set up a plan to utilize remaining Dial funds. That's Digital Inclusion and Literacy, which was an ARPA program that's coming to a close. From now until they run out, they have to be expended by the end of 2025. So these funds are going to be used for basically the same things OOA was using Dial funds for. We're going to pay for computer classes. We're going to pay for some scam squad programming so we can make sure that our seniors are safe online. So that's the plan there. So I'm sure you'll be seeing, you know, different things about that. Our healthy aging grant dollars are fully expended. The final report was sent to the state on October 30th. We continue our name change transition plans in December, when I'm back. We will request the board to change the name of Medina County Office for Older Adults to Medina County Senior and Adult Services to become effective January 1, 2025. And hopefully, we'll have a big reveal of a new logo. Parties this month at the agency include a Veterans Day celebration this Friday and our Thanksgiving, which we will be thanking and honoring our volunteers that volunteer for the agency. And that's on Friday, the 22nd of November. Thank you so much.
Very good.
Thanks, Laura.
Thanks, Laura. And now Planning Service Director, Denise Teck.
Good morning, all.
Good morning.
So we have our November Planning Commission meeting. We have five projects, one in Brunswick Hills, one, three actually, in Liverpool, and then a Chatham Township text amendment. For December, we did not receive anything for the agenda. Yesterday was our deadline, so our December meeting will be canceled.
Oh, okay.
For... We have a couple of new members that will be coming online to the Planning Commission, one for the City of Medina and one village representative. So you'll see that resolution in December. Are we working on the cost of services report on behalf of Steve? And we'll get that rolling as well this month. The program year 2022 Critical Infrastructure and Community Development Block Grant, those have closed out. I submitted the final performance report last week. So for... I also met with the Office of Community Development last week regarding our PY24 Community Development Block Grant. And they are... They've indicated we should receive something within the next couple of weeks, which I'm thinking hopefully before Thanksgiving. But if we give them a little bit of grace, maybe it won't be until December 1st. We will be working on our PY25 Community Housing Improvement Program, also known as CHIP application, this week, as well on, actually tomorrow, November 6th. And next week, non-November 11th, is the Zoning Inspectors Networking Community, temporarily called ZINC. So we will be meeting with them next, this week and next week, as well as I have a few Fair Housing appointments as well. And then for December, I'll be attending the CCAO Planning Directors' Meeting in Columbus, as well as in January, the Ohio Township Association's Winter Conference as well. So, and that is it. Are there any questions? And then, of course, minor subdivisions, large light developments. You know, we're continuing with those. But are there any questions?
I just wanted to state that Denise has took the lead on organizing our RFPs and writing executive summaries. And she has done such an excellent job. We reviewed them yesterday. And then we are going to have a meeting with some of the Fair Board members on Thursday.
Great.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. Commissioners Resolution. The only thing I actually have is a hearing date notice expedited, type-two annexation petition. The clerk of the Board of Medina County Commissioners received an expedited type-two annexation petition on November 4th for three parcels of land totaling 61.4450 acres of land from Wadsworth Township to the City of Wadsworth. No public meeting or hearing is required. And the Commissioners will review the petition during their regular meeting on Tuesday, December 10, 2024, at approximately 9:30 a.m. And that's the only thing I have to report on that. So next is public comment. Would you please come forward, state your name?
Good morning. My name is Teresa Snyder. And I... This is, again, about the crosswalks in Medina. And I did bring it up that, you know, they don't have to stop for the yellow lights, yellow blinking lights, that they can just go through. And I recommended that they should put the red lights across. Well, last Monday, not yesterday, last Monday, I was driving through, going... I was going south, you know, coming from North Port. And the yellow lights were flashing. I stopped. The person behind me stopped. The people started to cross, there were about four people. And the person came right beside me. Boom! I laid on the horn, and she stopped. If she wanted to stop and they had already started to cross, there could have been another incident. And I... Now, excuse my language, but I says... I rolled down the window and I said, "What the hell were you thinking?" I says, "The lights were on. I didn't see anybody." Okay. It was in Bowling Green Saturday. They did have the red lights for the stop, for the crosswalk. And I think, I believe this is really... And I called ODOT, well, only because I read in the paper that Medina was getting a grant to do something with ODOT, and they were going to do something with the square. So I called ODOT yesterday. And I explained to Sarah, you know, the problem. And she understood what I was talking about, you know? They don't have to stop for the yellow ones, but they do have to stop for the red ones. And I says, "They're supposed to do something there, but I'm not sure what it is." And she says, "Well, if you could find out," she says, "let me know." And the other issue is, they're putting that hotel up. And that's going to be more pedestrian traffic. And the other thing I want to bring up is, the cars are getting bigger. You have minivans, you've got SUVs, not necessarily trucks. But if a pedestrian starts crossing, somebody with a yellow light really may not see that pedestrian come for the right. Do you understand what I'm saying? So I think it needs to be... And really, they're not going to be activated all the time. I mean, there's going to be times where they're not going to be activated. It's not going to be a constant, you know, stop for a crosswalk. But so I was, you know, that was my recommendation to her. And she understood what I was talking about. So some places, they do have the red lights, but they have to stop for the red light.
Who have you talked with at the city? Who have you talked with at the city regarding this, City of Medina?
I didn't. I know, I know. But so I don't... If I could... It's a grant that they're getting, right?
Right, yeah. But regardless of the grant, obviously, it needs to be addressed. I thought council, what I read, I thought they were reviewing what to do over there because of the safety issues, what's happened with the...
Right.
Several accidents. So I would...
But it's still continuing. And then it was on Channel 5 last night.[1624.04] And another gal was on there, and she said, "Yeah, somebody almost got hit because somebody didn't stop, stop for them in the crosswalk." But those are the obstacles, the cars, and they don't have to stop. So if they don't see anybody right in front of them, they're not gonna stop if somebody ought to start in that crosswalk. And so, is, is there somebody I can?
Yes. So the city is seeking input until November 22nd, and the two individuals are counseling, I think.
Denise, just a second, we've got a.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Miles, we have a microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right, that's all right.
I think, do you mind if I come up?
Yeah, you can go ahead. Thanks, Miles. Go ahead, please, go ahead.
So the city is seeking input until November 22nd, John Coyne and Pat Patton. So Pat Patton, I believe, is the city engineer, and John Coyne is council president.
Right.
So I would recommend that you reach out to one or probably both of them.
Okay.
And provide your input there, because I'm sure they would appreciate that.
Yeah, and then.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
I can get back to, you know, Sarah, ODOT.
Sure.
And let her know then.
Well, I'm sure they'll be communicating with ODOT since they have to.
I work in healthcare, and of course, for our patients, with extremely safety.
Sure, oh, yeah.
And this is a safety issue, you prevent injuries, you prevent things.
Agreed.
So anyways.
All right.
When I come here.
All right.
So.
I can give you their.
We can get the contact information, actually, you can talk to our clerk out there. Our office, they'll, they'll get you the stuff. All right, thanks, thank you, Denise. All right. Thank you.
Here, I'll show you.
Stan, do you have anything?
For the weekly bills?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we already did.
We approved, it was 1, 1.1, 1.4.
I think it was 1.9.
1.9.
Okay.
1.9.
All right.
Colleen was right.
Okay.
You want the number?
With that, all right. With that, we'll do the, our, open up a discussion. Chris, do you have something?
Of course.
Matt, anything? All right. Colleen?
I just, the update on the fair, I gave one, Denise was up there, so.
Super, all right.
We had spoken briefly about it, but the, the incident Lafayette Township with the fire. And we had an email from a resident about that as well. For folks who've seen the, the video, or maybe people haven't seen the video, it was pretty heroic efforts, both from the Sheriff's Department and City Fire, who responded to that and rescued a woman who was trapped in the basement in the midst of a pretty aggressive fire. So I don't know if it's something we want to do any kind of commendation for, or just at least acknowledging the, the efforts that went into it, both on the part of, of the sheriff and his staff. And then Chief Walters from Medina City was part of the response, too. So maybe that's not the type of thing we would, we would typically do a commendation for, but at least acknowledge it at the meeting, I wanted to make note of it, so.
I think, yep. Anything else?
That was it.
All right. Do you want to note, or actually, item of discussion is Commissioners, we have our, an ad in Helping Hands for 2025. The cost for 2024 was $2,000, and we've asked them to send over their new rate sheet, and just want to know if we'd be interested in continuing to support the publication, as well as, I think we also provide an article, as, as well as the additional, to distribute that to all the households free of charge. So do you want to continue the?
I'm fine with that.
I'm fine, I like that the seniors get information for free right to their home.
All right, very good. All right, well, we'll continue that support then. All right, that's all I have. So we do have a request for executive session.
I will move that we convene an executive session to consider the appointment, employment, dismissal, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee and the appointment of public officials.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Harrison.
Yes.
Sweattick.
Yes.